This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we'll start our meeting with the House of Representatives. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Enter the republic which stands unencumbered in the visible liberty and justice for all. Okay, next on our bill of action, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, could you just remind everyone to mute their phone when they're not talking?
I'll second that motion by Patrick.
Okay, all those in favor of Mr. Bernie's motion to approve the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, stands voting unanimously. Since the one items removed from the consent agenda, we'll move on to the director's report. Is there a motion to approve, same.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions, comments with regard to the director's report?
Mr. Chairman, just if I could have just the two general managers walk through the personnel components of their respective reports to the director, just so we understand where we are currently on personnel issues with all three divisions.
Sounds reasonable to me. Tony or Neil, I don't care which one of you would like to start it, but Neil, since I see you, I'll ask you to start.
Currently, let me, it was a week and a half ago I wrote it, so a lot is changing, so let me just refresh. Okay, so I'll start with the water division. Showing hands, is my speaker okay right now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're good.
Perfect. So currently, we are in the recruitment for a maintainer two position in the water division. This was specifically for the distribution crew. This was a vacancy created by Frank Winters when he was promoted to chief maintainer. So we did complete interviews last week and we do expect to make an appointment within the next five to 10 business days on that position. The other item, which I think we've alluded to before, is Brian Naples began with the water and sewer division as the business manager December 14th, because he was promoted from the assistant business manager in the electric division over to the water and sewer divisions. There is now a vacancy, so we jokingly refer to it as the joint custody arrangement. Brian is graciously working in the mornings at the electric division, taking a well-deserved lunch, and then he is with the water and sewer divisions in the afternoon. So he is very busy because he is basically the lead person for all three division budget this year. So if he's not feeling overwhelmed tonight, give him a couple more days and he will be there. So those are current active recruitment. Elsewhere on the personnel, we do have a senior operator at the Pistopog Water Treatment Plant. We are now posting for that because there really aren't a lot of people with certifications out there. We know that, so why spend the advertising dollars? And then the other position we do have open right now is a maintainer two position in the distribution crew, and once again, we're trying to fill one before we decide where to go with that position. So any questions on the water side?
Neil, it's Patrick, just, yeah, just, I, we have talked about this previously, but we haven't talked about it in a while, that the Pistopog Pond Crew, and we were running on with a lighter crew out there, weren't we? And can you just provide an update or status on?
Certainly, so previously, let's go back to basically when I started in 2016 through mid to late 2018, we were running two formal shifts. We had a first shift from eight to 4:30, and then we had a second shift, which was a hard eight from 3:30 PM to 11:30 PM. Because of staffing, we have moved that to, we've shifted some of our laboratory testing around. And so now, right now, we are primarily running a first shift from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM with a full complement of our staff. We do have two recent retirees filling in for four nights of the week in evening shifts. So we're basically at a single shift right now at Pistopog, and that's because we just don't have enough bodies.
And so you're not looking to fill any spots? And are you comfortable with the staffing model that you're utilizing up there now?
I think the staffing model we're comfortable with is a function of there just are not the certified operators out there. And so Pistopog was designed to be staffed by eight senior operators. Right now, we have two senior operators and four junior operators, as well as two senior part-time staffers. So we're making it work, but we really would like another full-time senior staffer. We would like seven full-time individuals, because we're perfectly staffed when we're full, but that doesn't account for vacation, sick, other reasons, so staff is out. And so Pistopog, you know, we have staff on the plant seven days a week. So they're both inside the plant as well as what we call rounds. So every day, we visit all the pump stations, all the water storage tanks, the pressure-reducing valve, you know, in our distribution system.
I noted the issue on the consent agenda regarding the appropriate, what I'll call the budget appropriation for Bill. What is your expected timeframes to have Brian up and running and not need the services of Bill? I guess stated differently, what is that budget, what is that budget number going to get us to? What date in your mind?
So to answer your first question, really, when, it's a function as to when the electric division brings on a business manager as well as an assistant business manager. So we're a little bit, the water and sewer divisions are tied to them. This financing that we requested this evening, which was approved in the consent order, the goal is to bring us through at least the mayoral meeting as far as the budget process goes. So Mr. Phelan has the experience, but at this point, we also need the horsepower as well. It just all can't be done with Brian. But Bill is working about 40, the goal is about 48 hours per week for the water and sewer divisions. And that, we project that will bring us out to about mid-mark.
Okay, so in a lot of ways, we are tied to the hip with the electric division in terms of filling Tom's spot.
Well, it's Tom's spot as well as Brian's vacancy, because he was assistant business manager.
Sure, wow.
I couldn't be like, yeah, he's ours now.
Okay, thank you, Neil, and I guess we can move over to electric now, unless someone has any follow-up questions on that.
You want to do sewer?
Yo, please, please, yes, sewer, important, yes, I apologize.
So let's start with the maintenance repair technicians. So the maintenance repair technicians are, they take care of all the sewer pump stations, they take care of all the large pumps at the wastewater treatment plant, and they also take care of the garage, which includes 130 fleet vehicles between all three divisions. So Tom Doyle was promoted in late December from MRT1 to MRT2. So we currently have a vacancy for maintenance repair technician at Tom's old position. And in late December, we brought on two laborers, Mr. Scott Olson and Mr. Jason Moda. And the reason we did this is very similar to what we did up at Pistopog. We weren't finding the attendant with the wastewater certification. So we converted temporarily one attendant one and one attendant two to laborers with the goal that these two gentlemen will grow with the sewer division and get their certification. And in addition to that, we did have an attendant one leave us in early December. So we have a vacancy there. So right now, the active recruitments are MRT1 and Attendant 1. And then, you know, prelude, in the facility plan, I will point this out. In the facility plan, it does recommend that we will need one additional staffer to operate all the new equipment in addition to our current staff. So we will be looking to bring on a maintenance repair technician two, beginning budgeted for July 1 of this year. We're going to put it in the budget and see where it goes. You know, we've got new secondary pump station, we've got new UV equipment, we've got all the pumps as far as the tertiary phosphorus building, so you will see that included in the budget as well. So that's where we stand with sewer.
Okay, if there's nothing else on water, sewer, then Tony, if you would, bring us up to date on the electric personnel, please.
Sure, can you all hear me okay?
I can.
Okay, excellent. So for electric, you know, the internal candidates for meter apprentice, that position, we had a vacancy there that was created by somebody going over to the line apprentice group. That position has been filled and the candidate started today. The chief engineer position, this position is, it's the second time we've posted it. HR did conduct their interviews last week and I received a list from them of qualified candidates. There is one individual on the list, which we will be interviewing in the next week or so. We'll be scheduling that interview. Chief meter man, you can see that we posted that a few times, second time around. You know, we, basically it was an internal candidate, which was promoted into that position and which created a vacancy for the meter apprentice. And once again, we've posted for both, I posted in parallel a meter apprentice and a qualified meter man. You know, we have one vacancy, but if I do receive somebody that's fully qualified, I would prefer to get a qualified person in there. If not, I can always go to the apprentice list and interview candidates for an apprentice there. Energy conservation specialist, it's my understanding that those interviews occurred last week with HR. I'm waiting on a list from HR, I'm expecting that any day now, but I was told that they were scheduled for last week. The next position is the system operator position. Right now, we have one vacancy to fill there, but I have a gentleman that is leaving February 1st. I have another gentleman in that group that can leave any day, and that would leave me with three qualified operators. That group is a, typically when fully staffed, is a five-man rotation. Knowing that we had three employees in that organization that could leave at any day now, a few years ago, that was staffed up to six to try to start, you know, getting people in and qualified in order to be in a good position, and we're a little behind there. I'd like to get some, you know, some folks in there and trained, but that's being worked on. Rick and I met with the HR director and came up with a potential solution that we're working on right now to get like a trainee position for that group, which will allow us to bring in somebody and get them trained to be fully qualified, you know, at a lower level and provide the training necessary for that group. Business office manager position, that posting has come down, and I believe HR conducted the oral panel last week as well, and I'm waiting to get a list from them on that. I did confirm that those interviews did happen up there. The authorization for employment for the assistant office manager, the vacancy was created by Brian Naples. That position has been posted, and I have yet to get a schedule from HR when they're going to conduct the oral panel for that position. Could be a possibility that they're waiting for that position, the office manager position to be filled before conducting those interviews, but not certain. The authorization for employment for meter reader, that has been posted. The, we did get a candidate list sent to us by HR, and we scheduled, there was 12 candidates to interview. One of them dropped out because they moved on to other, you know, other offers, and we interviewed and completed all 11 interviews last Friday. So we just need to select our preferred candidate and make an offer there, and that will fully staff the meter reading group at this point. The apprentice meter technician, like I mentioned above, when we promoted Stan Dasky from chief meter technician to, I'm sorry, to chief meter technician from meter man A, we created a vacancy there, which has been posted. And then the authorization for a distribution technician has been posted, and that, I do not believe has come down yet, should come down soon. And then HR will have to schedule and conduct their interviews. And that was as a result of Joe Dwyer being promoted to general line foreman. So.
Thank you, Tony. On the, on the issue, I guess two follow-up questions for you, based on your experience. This is the first time I'm learning about this concept, that there actually are interviews of candidates before they actually ever get to you. What is the timing, based on Neil's report, what do you think the timing is on filling Tom's spot and backfilling Brian's spot?
Tom's spot, if I get the list this week, we can begin scheduling interviews, you know, interview within, you know, the next week or so. We select our candidate after they're interviewed, and then depending on if they're internal or external, I mean, there's, you know, there's a conditional offer process where a conditional offer is made, and, you know, it's subject to background, you know, criminal and motor vehicle background checks, and then a drug screening and physical exam. So that, that all could take, you know, a month after we're done and the conditional offer is issued, you know, to get through that process can take, you know, two to four weeks. And then, once that happens, we contact the candidate. We schedule a start date, typically if they're leaving somewhere, they want to, you know, give a minimum of two weeks, and then, so, you know, right now, as we sit here today, it could be six-plus weeks out for Tom's job. And Brian's job, I don't even know if they started their process to schedule an oral panel and interview yet.
Boy, that just sounds like a long time, a long, long time, which is concerning to me. The issue of the system operators, this apprentice system, this apprentice process, is that already underway? And, you know, I guess the other question is, when do you foresee you being at full employment in the system operator category? I know those, these are all critical roles, not having meter, meter, not having meter meters, reader, meter technicians is a critical role, but the system operator one also just seems alarming to me.
Right, so that one, it is underway. We, I have a draft put together of what that would look like. That'll need to go, you know, that's got to be something that, it goes through human resources, it goes through the union, you know, for approval, and then, and then on to town council. So that, you know, it could be as early as, you know, the next town council meeting, if all goes well through HR and the union. And then as far as filling that role, I mean, it typically takes, our experience is it takes about six months to get somebody qualified. So there's a difference between filling the, you know, having the body here and then having the body qualified on the desk. So, you know, if we go through the process and let's say we get somebody here two months from now, they won't be ready for eight months. So, you know, right now, I have one person leaving in February, and then mid-February, I'll have somebody, you know, qualified in that organization that's going through the training process, and that'll bring me to four operators, which is, which is okay. However, if the one individual that's in there decides to retire, you know, it's going to put them down to a three-man rotation, which would be basically seven days a week, you know, eight-hour, eight-hour shifts, no breaks.
For, that's, that's three people running a 24/7 operation? And that doesn't even account for COVID, if something were to happen, unfortunately, in the COVID front?
Correct.
Okay, I get that, it's a critical, okay, thank you, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other comments or questions with regard to the director's report, gentlemen? Okay, there is one comment I would like to make, that is with regard to page 4-21. This is with respect to addressing the internal, you know, monitoring control regarding behind the meter generation. I had asked Rick a question on this, it's sort of a follow-up, and that was with respect to, would there be, does it appear that there would be any sort of reach back on this if they do this? Thinking of 50 and five, et cetera. And Rick, if you want to make some comments with regard to that, please, I'd appreciate it. I know what the answer is, but I would like the other two commissioners to hear that, please. Rick? Can you hear me now?
Mr. Chair, just so you know, we can hear you.
Okay, I assume that, okay. To answer, I can answer my own question very honestly, because of the fact that Rick did check with, with, and it appears that this is strictly, I'm going to be on a going-forward basis, it's strictly for installations that are under 5 megawatt. So I don't think it should have, and it does not appear to be any potential concern for us in any way, shape, or form. But that was one of the things that I just, you know, that just stuck out to me, and that's based on, in part, in large part, on my experience over the past 15 or so years here, so I just wanted to mention that in passing. If there's nothing else, I would.
Well, you know, Mr. Chair, since you raised that issue, that was in or around the report, that the Pierce operated at a loss in November, and I don't know if you had any thoughts on how, is that, is the potential Pierce loss something that we're going to see in the foreseeable future because of the decreasing capacity costs?
Yes, I believe I'm unmuted now, and that, can you folks hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, earlier, my phone indicated I was unmuted, but I don't think GoToMeeting had unmuted me. So, yes, we, I believe we reported a commission some time ago and shared a projection that Mr. Keeney had prepared that, yes, the Pierce project because of, largely because of lower capacity revenues will run in the red for the foreseeable future. And I think you'll recall that at the time, the discussion was, should we give notice or not? And the law department had advised that it's not necessary, the wording in the contract is such that we actually have to give notice to remain in beyond the end of calendar 21.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think I, a follow-up where Patrick's coming from, and my notes are fairly similar, and that is, the Pierce facility was not dispatched. It wasn't dispatched because of economic reasons, it's got a high bidding requirements, it wasn't able to reach bidding, the low bids that are coming in. And it would appear, based on some of the new generation that's coming online from some of the solar facilities and potentially other facilities, prices will remain low, and the Pierce facility will be challenged to achieve successful bid acceptance. So that's, if you're concerned.
That's true. This is Rick. Of note is, it's not an energy resource, it never has been.
Right.
And so it, it's never been competitive as an energy resource. That's why on a monthly basis, it's rarely dispatched other than for its own necessary test runs. Its, its prime source of revenue is its mere existence through capacity revenues. And those have softened and look to continue, at least in the short term.
Yeah, I would agree with that, Rick. I think it's, I don't see reversal of that trend, at least for the short, at least for the short and midterm future.
So, Mr. Chairman, go ahead, Mr. Chairman, sorry. No, I'm just saying, so I think this is something that we probably should continue to talk about as we get into the, through the first and second quarter of 2021.
Agreed, I just made a note to myself, I will ask Mr. Keeney to refresh his projections.
Patrick, I couldn't agree more. And based on the capacity payments that we, you know, based on the auctions that we have, that we're looking at for the future, you know, the prices there are just going down, down. What's going to happen with this, with this one that's coming up the 1st of February is anybody's guess. I think it may be, it's possible, it may be a little better, but I don't think by much. But one of the things that's really kicking this one is, if I read this correctly, is the forward reserve portion of it has hurt us too. And that will last until. And that will last until, I believe, May first, or through May, you know, you know, in any event, uh, but it's a very real issue, I, I couldn't agree more, we need to, we need to keep on top of it, be aware of where it's going, get a, get it updated by Craig, uh, so we have an idea of where it's going for the next several years, so we can make an appropriate decision before call thirty-one, uh, twenty-one. All right, is there anything else, uh, with regards to the director's report? Very none, all those in favor of approving the director's reports, and whoever's saying aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye, stands voted unanimously. Uh, with that in mind, then I'll open up the, uh, public question and answer period, are there any questions from the public?
Yes.
Uh, that would be Adel Hyde, I do believe, yes, ma'am, you go right ahead.
Yes, correct, Adel Hyde, Copeford Thirty-Five, Whistle Tree Road, um, good evening. I have, uh, just a quick question suggestion, maybe hearing about all the open positions, including, um, laborers, apprentices, I was wondering, um, if, if you have ever thought about cooperating maybe with a school district? I think the manufacturing pipeline that the school district, the district was running with, um, HOPCAP was very successful and is, I think, going in a third round. I was just wondering if that, that might be some program that could be beneficial to the electric or water sewer division as well. Um, and then I have another question, going back to the December, uh, what was it, I think fifteenth meeting? Um, the agenda item fourteen, discussion voluntary residential green energy program. Um, I was going back to the video recording and, um, I, I, um, wrote down some quotes when Mr. Hennershot introduced the presentation on the, on the December fifteenth. He alluded to all the information, the good information, I guess, and I'm quoting, all the information, the good information, I guess I should say, that I have on this, about a potential green energy option. And he based that on a memo from Tim from November twenty-fourth, that Mr. Hennershot himself had summarized in a memo from December tenth. Um, he also stated his parameters at that point, namely that, A, quote, "Any such program will have to be based on a real energy, not merely REX or renewable, renewable energy credits", and B, that no cost, no cost is being borne by any customer that are, that is not participant of the program. Um, at that point, he was reminded by the commission that they wanted, that, that you wanted to focus on the REX only, and Mr. Henderson, Hennershot did not really share the good information during the December meeting. So I was just curious, any good information, I think, should not go to waste, so may I respectfully ask, ask that he share that information with the public, either tonight during the meeting, or maybe in another appropriate forum. Um, during the same meeting, during the discussion, Mr. Hennershot also shared that, according to an estimate from Energy New England, about thirteen percent of our energy mix comes from renewable sources, which was, um, welcomed by the commission with positive surprise. But with all due respect, thirteen percent is not even half of the renewable share that Connecticut's Renewable Portfolio Standard is asking for, which in two thousand and twenty-one is a total of thirty-point-five percent. I do understand that we are not bound by that standard, but I think it can't hurt either to follow as close as possible, and as, as I said before, thirteen percent is not even halfway. So therefore, again, if there's any good information about possible increase, possibly increasing the share of renewable energy in our energy stack, may I respectfully ask that the PUC at least take a look at that information, and maybe consider the reason Mr. Hennershot thought that a residential green energy program should include real green energy and not only REX? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to offer any sort of an update on that, I'll, I'll acknowledge minimal, if any, progress on my part in advancing that issue. Um, with respect to the conversation about REX versus real energy, the conversation that took place at that meeting was, for me at least, a clarifying one, where I came away better understanding what the PUC wanted from the program, and I now better understand that REX are an acceptable means to accomplish it. Uh, earlier, I did not appreciate that, I, I was, it was my impression that the PUC wanted it based on real energy, not merely REX, and so, um, that will be my focus going forward. And there was one other point, um, I can't recall, I'm sorry, I've, I've lost it.
Yeah, that, I, I'm sorry, that was a long.
Um, so, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just be, before the, yeah, I just, look, this, this, this concept, this concept of REX versus real energy, um, yeah, again, I, I was, I believe I was speaking out of my league when we talked about this in the first instance, the last time we met in person, that was September, October, I think. Um, you know, i- in my view, uh, I am a, a, a real live energy person, to the extent, again, and I, I've got a little different view on, on the percentage and whether thirteen percent is good. I think thirteen percent, I was pleasantly surprised, and I remain uh, ha- happy at this juncture that we're, we, we at least have thirteen percent of renewable energies, energy as part of our, of our standard operating procedure purchases. I don't know if it's feasible, and I, I think this is what I said out of my league in, in the September, October meeting, I, I don't know if it's feasible for us to increase that number to, let's just say thirty percent, based on purchasing renewable energy as it, as it's generated. I, I don't know if that's possible or not, or if the only way we are going to increase is increase pers- pursuant to a REX program. And again, Joel, and Mr. Chairman, you probably could speak to this better than I, but I am not one in favor to, to in, to move our renewable energy purchases up via REX, based on my understanding that REX are just, essentially, we're just, we're buying pieces of paper that are being sold on the market by those, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, by those who are producing green energy. It's not necessarily that that green energy is going to heat, heat my house or heat other Connecticut Wallingford ratepayers, um, or light Wallingford ratepayers homes. And, and I just wanna make sure that, that, that's, that's, that's what my understanding is, and I don't wanna just, I don't wanna be an advocate of, of working expeditiously to increase a, a number from thirteen to thirty if that number is going to be increased by purchasing paper, which is what I understand it to be.
Well, excuse me, Mr. Bernie, but there, there's, there's now sort of two topics in front of us, as a result of your comments. One is how to achieve the vol- the, the red, the voluntary residential green energy program, if the commission wishes to pursue one based on what I might prepare, bring forth. And then a separate concept of the overall energy portfolio, having more than just the thirteen percent that happened to happen because that's sort of what the regional market is at this point. And, um, the commission's always made it clear to me that the cost of our service was paramount, and that's best done by the traditional purchases through creditworthy county counterparties, um, through sort of a competitive bidding process via the regional market, and not, and, and not throwing in the consideration of it needs to be so much renewable. Um, and then the idea of REX, to me, at this point, is merely a means by which to possibly structure and produce a voluntary program for individual customers. I hope, I hope those comments were helpful.
They, they were quite helpful to me, Rick, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, uh, from the public, then?
If I, if I may, just to clarify, may, maybe I understood that wrong, but my impression was that Mr. Hennershot had information that would make, um, making this voluntary residential green energy program feasible, including real green energy. I, I know it's not a real green electron coming into my house, I'm, I'm aware, but, but, um, that would increase our demand or our share of, of green energy. And I just wanna make sure, if, if that's the case, if he has good, quote, good information, I, I just would like the commission to take a look at that and, and at least consider if that could be an option, and not from the start, and say, no, I'm not interested in that part, I'll focus on the REX. I think that's, that's my main, my main question.
Well, I'll try to take a stab at that, I think the phrase you keep coming back to is when I said good information. What I was talking about was clarifying information from Energy New England. I, I don't know, good might be in the eye of the beholder, I'd have to go back and revisit what I said, but my point at the time was, I'd received a very, to me, informative and illustrative email from Energy New England. Um, and that was the quote, "Good information", unquote, that I referred to at the time. Um, and to repeat what I said to Mr. Bernie, and to clarify for the record, and to make sure you miss, you understand me, Ms. Copefer, that I view now my instruct, the preference of the commission to be that a vol- a voluntary green energy program may very well be based merely on REX.
Correct.
Just for the purposes of that program. And one other detail I, I didn't get a chance to repeat this evening, uh, 'cause it skipped my mind, and I remember it was, another overarching criteria of this program needs to be that there are no costs generated that, that in any way, shape, or form are borne by any other customers, they're only borne by the participants of this program.
Yeah, and if I may, I think, you know, I, I, I can echo that, that, that certainly was my impression from the previous meeting, that, uh, that, that seemed to be what the thought was with regard, you know, from all, all three commissioners. If we start getting into green energy, it's almost guaranteed at this point that it's gonna increase the prices to, to everybody. And that really is not what we're about, what we're about is providing the lowest reasonable cost energy that is reliable and doing so in a safe manner. Uh, if it gets to the point where the, and I've said this before, and this has been my opinion for years, if it gets to the point where, if you will, the green energy is competitive, I have no problem whatsoever in having it. But keep in mind that if you're dealing with solar in this climate, you're only talking, solar is probably only good for maybe twelve, maybe fourteen percent of the time. Wind, wind, you may get more than that, wind doesn't always blow when you need it. So one of the biggest things that we have to consider, always, is the storage end of it. And when, you know, if the storage is, gets to the point where it is economically feasible, and pri- you know, that then will help make both solar and wind far more competitive, perhaps, than they, than they have been. But it's, it's a combination of things, and as I say, the, you know, the program that has been discussed was with the idea of for providing a voluntary one, similar to what was done several years ago, uh, and the only way we can do that, potentially without increasing prices to the other customers, is by the utilization of REX. And as I say, at some point, it may be economically feasible to go ahead and get specific green energy. I have no problem with that, but I just don't want it to cost our customers more than what it needs to. That's just my personal opinion.
I, I understand and appreciate that, I am a customer, I definitely benefit from low rates. Um, however, if I may go back, um, I think Mr. Reinbold earlier stated in, in connection with the Pierce station, um, that the electricity prices have been going down and will probably continue to go down for the next few years or longer, um, midterm, but in part, at least, due to renewable energy, um, coming in cheaper. So I, I have trouble understanding, on one hand, you say, if we go, if, if we start getting into green energy, it will be more expensive, and on the other hand, we see that actually renewable energy keeps lowering electric rates or electric prices on the market.
It's a very, it, it, it's a very complex market with many, many moving parts, and, um, the Pierce plant, among other things, is essentially a capacity hedge that we have, and it's a matter of what we're willing to pay for a capacity hedge. Uh, there have been benefits of that for a number of years, we knew that, you know, I know roughly what it's kind of, what it takes for capacity rates to go ahead and make it economically feasible for us, uh, and at this point, that's only gonna get worse over the next several years. As that being said, we own the building, I say we, the town owns the building. Uh, we are thirty-two-point-eight-five percent, I believe, owners of the, of, of the Pierce generating portion, you know, the GE Frame Seven that's in there, uh, it's a matter of whether we continue with that investment or not. The fact that it's in our building probably lends more weight to keeping it than it might otherwise. But, uh, that's something we're gonna have to take a look at as, as, as the year rolls on here.
Um, Mr. Chairman, per- permission just to, to, to make sure that I understand something that was just said, uh, not regarding, but regarding Pierce, but also this concept that the reason why energy prices are going down is because of an increase in green energy, that, that's a thesis that I just heard, it is, that I, if I heard that correctly, can somebody just make sh- make sure the record is clear that, that, that there is or is not a correlation to that?
In the capacity market, Patrick, there may be, uh, in the energy market, there would not be.
Correct.
Um, and with the capacity market, it's just, it's sheer volume. There's so many units bidding for a given amount of required capacity that it's almost an oversupply. But the, but the projects still need the revenues they need to remain economically viable, and so the energy costs will be what they be, 'cause that's where they see most of their revenue coming from. They recognize the low capacity costs, that isn't going to pay all the needed revenue for the project, and so the energy costs will then be what they will, you know, tho- those are, those are based on real operating pressures. The capacity revenues are, are purely a result of essentially supply and demand.
Yeah, sure, okay, thank you very much.
At the risk of oversimplifying the markets that Mr. Beaumont alluded to, they're complex with many moving parts.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then I will close the public Q and A session and move on, and that will be moving to, since item five and six.
Excuse me, did we, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, do we have a vote on the, um, oh, yes, we did on the director's report, I see that now, I'm sorry.
Not, not a problem.
Yes, I'm, 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 I'm keeping track of a set of motions for Mrs. White, so, since we are remote from each other.
Question it and make sure, um, and say, yes, we did already, then to not vote on it, so I appreciate the question.
Yeah, we're good, thank you.
Okay, moving onward then, we'll move on, uh, to item number seven, item number, items number five and six have been removed from the agenda per the individuals' request who had originally requested them. So Neil, if you would, uh, you sent out an update earlier today with regard to the water pollution control facility, if you would be ha- be kind enough to go through that, we would appreciate it.
Certainly, so we will focus on the building and facility construction first. At the secondary settling tanks, the contractor continues to, uh, move forward with excavation and sheeting for the two new additional secondary settling tanks. Um, moving forward, and I revert, I changed the order around this week, so a little more logical flow order, literally, literally and figuratively. logical flow order, uh, literally, literally and figuratively. Um, the secondary pump station, so all of the lower level concrete walls have been poured and the contractor has begun installation of the thirty inch discharge piping. Uh, it's quite a, quite a site. I was, uh, actually in the lower level of the secondary pump station late last week.
Um. Neil, we can't hear you.
I'm unmuted on my, I'm, I'm unmuted on my side.
I can hear you, Neil.
I can hear you very well.
Okay. Tony, can you now hear me?
Tony, can you hear him?
Tony?
Right.
Can you hear any?
Tony, can you hear anybody?
I hear somebody in the.
I can't hear anybody. Okay. Well, I don't know what to tell you.
All right. Uh, we will move on to the tertiary phosphorus building or, uh, T P B. At this point in the project, T P B just seems to roll off everyone's tongue associated with the project. Uh, the contractor continues to rub or finish, uh, the concrete, uh, specifically the concrete boot beams for the roof structure. Installation of piping in the lower level of the T P B has begun, including the thirty-six inch influent pipe, the thirty inch bypass pipe, and the forty-two inch effluent pipe. Um, and then, uh, the contractor, C H Nickerson, has begun installation of the fourteen inch plant water pipe, uh, in the lower level of the T P B as well. Construction of the parapet wall at the roof level is ongoing. And, uh, they have started to install slide gates and stop log frames at the influent box to the tertiary phosphorus building. So quite a bit going on, uh, within the last thirty days in that building. Uh, UV disinfection post-eration building. Um, so last month, we commented that the contractor has moved the UV equipment inside the building in their wooden transport and storage boxes. They are now in the process of unpacking the equipment and installing it. And installation of the motor control center, uh, for both the UV and the post-eration operations has begun as well. Uh, the emergency generator building, the roof, the roofing trusses and deck are complete. And the masonry subcontractor is installing the brickwork, uh, on top of the concrete block walls. And then the existing personnel electrical building, um, the contractor, A E COM, and our Wallingford sewer division staff are making final preparations for connecting the temporary standby generators, uh, prior to removal of the existing standby generator. So we are required to have a standby generator power at all times. So we're going to take out the permanent one, uh, use temporary ones because the emergency generator building is not up and running as well. There's been quite a few internal meetings as well regarding that. So switching to page two, uh, for those of you that received the handout, uh, original contract sum forty-five million, five hundred, seven thousand dollars. Net change orders to date, uh, through the first fifteen, uh, months of construction, so net change orders, one hundred, five thousand, eight hundred, sixty-nine point three six. That represents zero point two three, two six percent at this time. So we are less than one quarter of one percent. And C H Nickerson through December fifteenth, twenty twenty has billed thirty-three point two six percent. So our contract sum to date is a little more than forty-five point six, one, two million dollars. Again, that is through December fifteenth because that is the last payment application that we have received. And our construction contract schedule, there have been no change scheduled days, so remains February ten, twenty twenty-two. We have thirteen months to go for the official contract completion date. Um, I did receive an email question from Mr. Reinbold, uh, brief summary of, uh, what is driving, um, the less than one quarter of one percent net change orders to date. So we've had some credits and we've had some, uh, debit. So, uh, we did have a credit for changing to mechanically fastened rails. We had a credit, um, for changing from cast iron to stainless steel gates. So together, oh, you're gonna, hold on. About one hundred, sixty thousand dollars in credits. Um, so cost for change orders, um, one of the common items that, uh, we are seeing as well currently through both approved change orders as well as change orders that are currently in negotiation and discussion, uh, between C H Nickerson and A E COM are, um, structures that were left in place, essentially abandoned during the last upgrade in nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen eighty-nine. Um, so we have run across those, um, several structures at the secondary settling tank. Uh, there was an old pump station that needed to be removed. Um, and then we have some other ones coming up in a future change order. So removing that existing pump station was thirty-five thousand dollars in change. Uh, we needed to, uh, purchase new, uh, duplex basket strainers to meet American iron and steel regulations per D E E P. Uh, that was approximately seventy-one hundred. Um, one of the large driving aspects was to change to a twelve lamp UV system. That was nearly a seventy thousand dollar cost to the town, and that is, uh, particularly, uh, if we start to get an aluminum limit on that. So that was preemptive. Um, we have talked about this. If you remember the storm Manhole to the west of the anaerobic basin, that was a constructibility item, uh, that was approximately sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. And then, um, two of the, one other large line item has been to provide a temporary electrical, uh, feed and conduit to both the anaerobic tank as well as the fifty-six rotating biologic contactors. Uh, that is really a function of all that was going on in Main Street and phasing and our compressed, uh, design and construction schedule. So, uh, so to date, the D E P has approved, uh, six change orders. And so the net, the net is the one, zero, five, eight, six, nine. I don't know if you had any other, uh, specific questions? And I'll, so just, so for edification of the Public Utilities Commission as well as the public, um, you know, so all change orders start as a P C C O R prime, uh, contractor change order request. Um, there are many emails and documentation that go back and forth between A E COM and C H Nickerson. So A E COM is our construction engineer firm, takes the lead on, uh, negotiating and making sure everything is brought forward. It then goes to the Wallingford Sewer Division staff. We take a look at it, and if we have any questions, it, um, goes back to C H Nickerson and A E COM for questions as well. So within A E COM, I would say there's probably six or eight people that are looking at every single change order that I know of, plus more behind the scenes. Um, certainly when it comes across, uh, I touch base with the A E COM project manager, the A E COM resident inspector, uh, Dan Sullivan, and I discuss them. Um, I've even brought, you know, one or two to Eric Krueger. So, you know, this is a very robust, um, peer review process, and it does take a long time. And we are still negotiating change orders from, I would say, six months ago. You know, with a project like this with the schedule, you're dealing with what's in front of you, and sometimes the change orders take a backseat. So we do have some future debits coming up, and we do have some future credits coming up as well. Uh, so we certainly track the credits pretty closely. So that'll answer any questions that you may have.
One quick comment, of course, you know, we did know that the change order on the UV was coming. You know, you know, we knew that, that, you know, we just didn't know what the quantity was, you know, of, of that amount was going to be, Neil. But certainly increasing the number of units naturally was going to go ahead and increase it. So that, 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 that we knew of, and that, that's a significant size to that one. To a project of this size, uh, to be this far along, and it were what, about forty percent, probably a little bit better than forty, forty-five percent at this point, probably?
Uh, so Nickerson has billed thirty-three percent. Their, their billings is a little over fifteen million at this point.
Yeah, they have billed that. Where are we? I mean, I'm sure we're, they're a little bit behind on the billing, I would assume.
I'd say we're, I'd say we're high thirty, about thirty-eight percent. I think forty is a little aggressive.
At this point, to see less than a quarter of one percent in change orders, I don't think is too bad, you know, at, you know, at this juncture. I, I realize it's going to go up, that's why, that's one reason we have contingency. I mean, there is always going to be, there are always going to be things that are going to be missed. Uh, there's going to be, uh, things that, you know, surprises such as the structures and, you know, that, you know, that we found that we weren't anticipating, et cetera. Uh, that's, that's just, that's just the way construction goes. But appreciate the report, appreciate the question, Joel, with, with regard to trying to get some gran, granularity around the change orders, et cetera. Uh, so.
And I, and so we do track the change orders and we put them into categories, including value engineering, which is credit, existing site conditions about buried structures that we did not know were there. You know, this is basically the third reincarnation of, of the wastewater treatment plant site. And if you were, and Mr. Beaumont may remember, but my understanding based on historical knowledge is, is that the contractor for the nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen eighty-nine, uh, upgrade, a really construction, uh, left a lot of money on the table. So if a structure, so if a structure could be left there and not taken out at their cost, it was basically a cost avoidance in nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen eighty-nine. So particularly at the secondary settling tank, uh, we have run into a former, um, pump station slash vault. Uh, we have run into steel sheeting. Um, and then also a portion of a existing settling tank, uh, from the nineteen fifties where the secondary pump station is. So a big portion of our change orders signed and executed to date or upcoming are site conditions.
Yeah, and, and the thing is, is the only way you, we would have known that they were even there is if we still had the, you know, the plans, you know, the, the as-bilts, if you will, from the, uh, mid-fifties. And, or we done all sorts of, uh, testing, you know, test borings, G P R, et cetera. I mean, you know, there's only so much you can do realistically when you go ahead, particularly given the compressed timeframe.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Exactly.
To do this, could go ahead and design it, et cetera. And so, you know, it is what it is, and, uh, it does not surprise me that we found things. This is, you know, you're right, it's at least the third iteration. First iteration goes back to nineteen twenty-six, actually, I believe, twenty-three, twenty-six timeframe. And no, Patrick, I, I wasn't there for that. Almost, but seriously, though, uh, no, appreciate the report, repeat, you know, are there any other questions, gentlemen? Hearing none, is there any other business to be brought before this body this evening? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourned, please sit down by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, one quick, thank you, one and all. Tony, can you hear us at all? I would say the answer to that is no. Rick, would you do me a favor, please? Would you call Tony and let him know that the meeting is, you know, has been completed?
Yeah, he had to move to his office. He's right next door. I'll go over and tell him.
Okay, well, I, as I say, if you would, because he doesn't seem.
Well, I think I'm going to go home and then I'm going to text him.
Okay. Right. All right. Folks, take care. Have a good one.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Yes, thank you, everybody.
Take care.